Live in five, four.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the North Idaho College Board of Trustees meeting for November 20, 2013. Would you all rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a full quorum. All of the trustees are present, and we have no guests that have signed up. Or maybe we do. Oh, we know we've not, no guests have signed up. As everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes, and if so, are there any additions or corrections or deletions?
Mr. Chair.
If so, the minutes will be accepted as...
Two sets of minutes, right?
I forgot, I forgot our new strategy.
We're just moving things right along here.
Okay.
We have no one who has signed up for public comment, and so we'll move on to Pat Whitcomb, and he's going to make a presentation on celebrating success, the NIC Athletics Community Service Projects. Pat?
Thanks for letting me have this opportunity to come in and celebrate success with our community service. I am filling in for Al Williams, who's back at the national volleyball tournament in Casper, Wyoming, right now. A couple of things before I jump into the community service part of it is just a little background on what our athletics have done over the past year. We have just over 200 athletes here on campus. Their GPA is a 2.97 overall, and so just higher than the average student body that is here, so we're pretty proud of that. Along with that, I mentioned that volleyball is right now back at the national tournament in Casper, Wyoming, after finishing second in the regional tournament, so we wish them all the luck in the world starting off tomorrow. The women's basketball team, right now, is ranked 16th in the nation. Our men's basketball team is just starting into their season, and usually sends more Division One transfers out of our school than almost any other school in our region. Golf, had a good fall. They've won two of the three tournaments that they were in this fall. Softball made it to the semifinals of the regional tournament last year. Soccer, both men and women, made it to the district semifinals this year. The men had more wins than they have had in five years, and so congratulations to all of them. The wrestling team won the national title last year in 2013, and are ranked second currently right now. It just doesn't stop with our athletics, though. I've got the guys in the crowd here. Our head athletic trainer was chosen this year out of everyone to go back in September and serve as the head athletic trainer at the World Championships of Wrestling in Budapest, Hungary, Randy Boswell, back here, and so that was a big kudo, not just for him, but for us, to be chose out of everyone and came back with the world champion, Jordan Burles, and I'm sure Randy would say it's all up because of him. Now to transition into our community service. We have some of our pitchers up here. Some of the things that our teams are involved in, community service-wide, is the food bank. Randy took his trainers out last year and served with the food bank. The Susan G. Komen Race for the Cure. Softball, men's basketball, wrestling, we're involved with that. The men's basketball team and women's basketball team with the special needs basketball game that just happened. If anyone was able to attend that, it was a great event that they have every year. The volunteer coaching that goes on from the little kids wrestling that we run for the park and rec to the North Idaho Elite that women's basketball does in the various camps that the teams hold for them. The Coeur d'Alene Crossing, this year, the swim event, raised $30,000 for three nonprofit organizations that we were able to do that. Habitat for Humanity, our volleyball team has been involved in that. I can speak more directly to the wrestling part of it. What we do in wrestling as we go by this, and not only what we do, but kind of why we do it, I'm a strong believer in character wins championships. I mean, you can show that on the wrestling mat, or basketball court, or whatever through the practice, but I think it's just as important to get my wrestlers out into the community and have them give back to the community and build their character that way. So when they're back at that national tournament, they're not just wrestling for their teammates or their coach or their school. They're wrestling for that community, for that first grade student that they read to, or the Race for the Cure that they were down there. They're out there trying to win a championship for everyone, and so there is a reason for us to be doing that. As we were choosing our programs that we wanted to do, it was important to me to, number one, be sustainable, not something we did one year and then it disappeared. It was something we're going to do year after year after year. Also, non-political, that it wasn't, didn't matter what side of the aisle you were on, that everyone joined in and believed in what we were doing. And as we go through, I think all of our programs that we did met that criteria. We start off in August with our school supply giveaway that some of you were at. We decided to join in that this year because there was a need. Probably the biggest stressful time, I'd say, for families, other than Christmas time, is the start of school, because all those kids come home with all the lists that they need to have, and if the parents have to look at them and say, "We just can't get everything on that list," you know, then it's that student that's going to go to school, maybe lacking something. So we jumped in there, and it was a lot of fun for us. And one of the, or two of the slides up there were all of the books and the pencils and everything we gave away. Domino stepped up and gave free pizza, and we made it more of a celebration. Through that, there was $2,000 worth of school supplies given away that in 400 students that came through there, in that fast and furious three hours that we were there. And now we've set our goal up for raising twice as much as that next August before they take off with it. The next thing we do is our We Care t-shirt sale. We get sponsors and we make our 200 t-shirts, and we offer them to everyone out there in the public, and many people have bought them, but it says "We Care Wrestling" on it, it's got a ribbon on it, and all of the proceeds from that go to the Susan G. Komen Race for the Cure. And this was our fourth year of doing it, and we sold out again. We'll be presenting a check for $2,000, so $8,000 just from t-shirt sales. And the reason we do that is, has little to do with wrestling, but more to do with that, we truly believe that our wives and mothers and sisters and daughters deserve more, more. Everything we can do until we don't have to sell t-shirts for that reason anymore. And, you know, that is our goal. So next year, it'll be our goal to hit $10,000 in that. The next thing that we do is our Christmas for All during our tri-state tournament down here, that we host a big high school wrestling tournament, that if any of you have had the fortune or misfortune to wander through the crowd at a gym during that Friday and Saturday, is we raffle off an iPad. Last year was the first time we came up with this idea to do it, and ticket sales were great. Within two days, we raised $600 for Christmas for All. So that's something that we can give there and feel good about it. The next thing, something probably the biggest thing, because we've done it the longest, is a Shirley Parker reading program. This year, we'll give away our 12,000th book, and the program is where we go out to all the first grades in the Coeur d'Alene School District, and every first grader is going to get a book in their hand. My wrestlers will do their best to read to them, and that's why we choose first grades and not second grades. And then they'll go out to recess with them. But the most important thing is that child gets to bring that book home, and it's theirs. Their mom and dad didn't have to buy it from them, they didn't have to borrow it from the teacher, and they didn't have to check it out from the library. That is theirs forever, and you should see the pride in their eyes with that. And they're more apt to bring that home and read it again and again to mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, brother, sister, and it's very important for us to kick off that reading at an early age, and I know some of you have come out and joined us with that. You know, I wish I could say it was a selfless effort, it's pretty selfish on my point, because I come away with that much more than these first graders do. They enjoy it and everything that goes along with it, but the feeling that we get when we take off out of there and know that we've done this again and again, gives us, you know, a great amount of joy with it. As we look into kind of why we do this, I have an overall goal from wrestling, and I only can speak to wrestling because that's what I do, I'm the coach. If we can hit a trifecta in here with our kids, if we can get them a national championship, bring a diploma, in a sense of giving back to their community when they've left here, we've done our job. You know, national champions, things probably have to fall into place there and make sure everyone's healthy to get that. As far as community service, there's no guesswork there. If we get up and we go do it, it's going to happen, and that's how it is. If we get our kids to class and we stress the importance of them getting their diploma, that's going to happen. That doesn't take luck, they don't have to be healthy for it. And so, two of the three, we just do. The third one, we hope falls into place, and that my assistant coach overcomes my coaching, and then all of a sudden, we can put together a national championship team. But if our kids can leave there with that sense, then we've reached our goal. Tyson Springer wrestled for me back in 2003, single mom, his two older brothers wrestled for me. Tyson went on from here and wrestled at Dickinson State University. He called me, and when Dan said, "Hey, how does that reading program work? How did you get the money for, you know, those books and everything?" He started that reading program as a student wrestler, not as a coach, at Dickinson State University. Now he's a head coach, had a brand-new program in Doane, Nebraska, and he'll actually be here on Saturday with his team, where he continues this program. So this program is spread, you know, throughout the United States, and hopefully, that's our goal with it. You know, looking at this, we understand that we can't be all things to all people all the time. We're going to come up and be disappointed if we try that, but that's not an excuse for us to not expand and do what we can and understand that we can be, you know, something to someone sometimes, you know, and that's all there is to it. There's no excuse for us not to do that. We're proud to do it, and it's a lot of fun for us to do that. Are there any questions here, comments?
Run.
First thing Pat says is, "Don't ask me a tough question," so here it goes.
Yeah, no math.
No math.
We've got that agreement.
No reading, no reading.
No, not unless it's a pitcher book.
I just want to say to you, Pat, is I've known you for a long time, and I want to say thank you on behalf of our community, and most people know you as a tough guy because you're always there, but I see you as a softie, somebody that's emotionally attached to doing what they do, and you do it with your heart. And how blessed are we to have you as a representative of our community? And I know winning a national title is always something you work toward, but what you see with these special needs kids and what you do there every day, what an awesome return on your investment of time, and thank you for what you do. I just want to say, God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Before you sit down, Pat, I guess I'd like to echo Ron's comments, but I really enjoy your presentation in helping the community and the board and everybody understand the breadth of the activities and the breadth of the interest and the breadth of the commitment that you and your staff and your wrestlers and the rest of the athletic community have. I think so many times, people underestimate the value of athletics and education, and your comments tonight, I think, help us understand some of the depth of value that you get out of athletics and education, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Our next, our next agenda item is the Higher Education Campus Project. John Mueller and from Landmark Landscape Architects, as well as Brad Marshall and Dale Braun from J U B Engineers.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. Again, I'm Brad Marshall, a project manager with J U B Engineers. With me is Dale Bounty, the Vice President, J U B, and John Mueller with Architects West and Landmark Landscape Architects. We're really here to speak to the educational corridor project that wrapped up this year with the planting of some remaining trees that we had held back until the monument entry sign was constructed on Northwest Boulevard and River Avenue. Kind of taking you back, we started this project back in 2010, based on some different planning documents. We went through a shred in preliminary design project process, and the first phase of the project was constructed in 2011, next phase was constructed in 2012, and the remaining improvements are finished out this summer. I think you'll agree, the project looks great. It certainly opens up the college, the existing college, improves the access, whether or not it's Hubbard, the river, alleviates congestion at Mullen Avenue. That was a significant problem in the past. Allows the college to expand for years and years to come. In addition, it improves access to the Fort Grounds neighborhoods as well. So huge benefits to the community of the college, and allows economic opportunity and expansion for this area. The project looks so great, and quite frankly, we're so proud of it, along with college and the city and LCDC. We've had the opportunity to submit the project to various organizations for awards, and we received those awards, about a half dozen of them. We received a Idaho Business Review Top Project Award, the American Council of Engineering Companies A C E C Transportation Award, the Idaho Smart Growth Redevelopment Award, the Association of Idaho Cities Resilient City Award, and American Society of Landscape Architects Award, that John will speak of as well. So pretty incredible project, incredible opportunities, and a great collaboration between the city, the college, and LCDC, and of course, the Fort Grounds residents. With that, we'd like to present a project poster that shows some great aerial photos of the project and some snapshots of some of the folks that you'll recognize. Without him, I'm going to turn it over to John Mueller, he's going to speak just a little bit.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. The latest, I think, recognition for the project comes from the American Society of Landscape Architects, which is the professional association that kind of represents not quite 16,000 landscape architects nationwide, and it has 56 different chapters. Our local chapter is the Idaho-Montana chapter, and every two years, we have an awards program, which was recently held with kind of the joint conference we had here in Coeur d'Alene with the Idaho Parks and Recreation Group in September. And we had about 16 folks submit projects, and not quite half, I think, were selected for recognition, including the Higher Education Corridor Projects, which includes the overall Ed Corridor A and B, but also the parking lot open space and Monument Project as well. And so, we're very pleased to be able to also give this to you in recognition of your participation, your collaboration with all the parties, and certainly, the jury was comprised of landscape architects from southern Nevada and the Las Vegas area. We were pleased with that recognition because they come from an area that knows design and appreciates good design. So certainly for us and for all of us in the community, it's a great project and a great recognition. So on behalf of our team and the folks at Landmark and Architects West, we do thank you for the opportunity to be involved and to help shape the future of the campus.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for allowing us to be here. And just closing, it was our desire to present information like this to you, but to also say that we appreciate being selected to do this project. We knew it was important, we gave it everything we could. We had great cooperation as we worked through this. Ron Dorn and, what's your name now? Gary Stark, wonderful people to work for and very good representation of the college, college interests at heart, quality project at heart, and willingness to work through the issues. And needless to say, when you dig up an old mill site, there are issues, and things didn't quite go, you know, it's not like going out on the prairie and working up a piece of field out there that doesn't have anything buried in there, and nobody knows where everything is. But great people to work with, a great project. I think you'll share all of the allocates that this project has received, both inside the state of Idaho and outside of the state of Idaho. Speak to a great project, and now the Arts Commission has stepped up, and there's some public art down there. The city has made some trail connections, which are very valuable along the shoreline. They cleaned up a little, I don't know, slum and blight area along the river over there that was not a place that you would really want to go. Now it's a nice trail along the river, and you can actually see the water and not be afraid to be there. And so, you know, it's just turned out to be a great project with other things happening after the project to make it even better. So we're pleased to be involved, and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I comment?
Yes, Kristy.
Well, that was a wonderful presentation. I have to tell you, the Board of Trustees, there's been many before us, and now all of us, Judy and I, were a part of that original board, and many boards before us dreamed about the opportunity of how to expand the campus and how to get our hands on that property and plan for growth in the future. And to have it all come together after years and years and years of planning and talking, and then the wonderful work that all of you did, and now when we drive by it, literally takes our breath away when we see what it's become, and then we know what's going to happen long after we're gone, there's going to be such more wonderful things. I think you hit it home with the correct statement, that it takes an entire community, the city, our urban renewal, the college, the other higher education entities, our business community, and certainly, all of our residents that support the higher education in our region, because we're, we really are a region, we're not just the city of Coeur d'Alene. And so, it has been just a privilege to be part of this and see what can become of that wonderful mill site. I worked there as a kid, and so to see what it is now and what the possibilities are are just tremendous, and your work is beautiful, and thank you for coming back and sharing these awards with us.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Before you sit down, I think I'd like to add my comments to Kristy's in that I remember as a non-board member, when the project was being proposed and discussed, and clearly it was a blank slate. It was a blank piece of land that cried out for improvement, and you brought to it not just engineering skills, but artistic skills in putting it together, as we see in some of the photographs, but also in the awards, obviously, that you've been able to develop. And other artists will come forward as the years go by to help us complete the picture, but you have given us a great start on that piece of property and what it will mean to our community in the future, and we all thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is the election of officers. And the way we go about this is to, we have three different, or four different offices, treasurer, secretary, vice chair, and chairman. And the, so we will open it up for nominations for treasurer. So nobody wants to nominate anybody?
I wanted to start with chair. I wanted to start at the top and work our way down.
Oh, well, that's, I was just going by the list here. You want to do it backwards?
Yeah, and then what's left, we can fight over the scraps.
If we're going, I think it's the first person to speak, Ken, that always is in the best position, so if we're going to put a nomination for chairman, I know a guy that's done one heck of a job for the last year, and I've only been on this board for a year now, but it's incredible, the quality of work that you've done to bring four misfits, messed-up people together, and resemble some type of an organized feeling.
Actually, there are five of us misfits.
Well, it takes one to know one, right? So it would be an honor to be the first one to nominate you for continuing to be our chairman.
Well, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
I'll third it.
Okay, I'll force it.
All right, I guess we don't have to vote. So for chair, it's Ken Howard.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. That's the reason I came back, I was trying to...
Be sure you were here.
Make sure I could protect my entrance.
Well, here you are.
Mr. Chair, you're going to, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun.
Then the nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Judy Meyer. Make a motion.
I will second that.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Judy is re-elected as vice chair. And nominations for secretary?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Ron Nielsen for secretary.
Who would ever thought this? I think we, one time we went back, remember this date?
Write it down.
Kristy and I got along with something, thank you.
Yes.
Second?
Meyer seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, Ron?
Are we keeping the two positions combined like we did last year?
Actually, we've got them, we've got them separate this year, so, do you want to do that?
Doubling up on you, Ron.
Would you do treasurer, too?
We're doubling up on you now that you said yes.
I guess so.
Double duty.
Double duty, I'm in.
Okay, so, we need a motion, I think, from the board.
Charles Gunn.
I'll make it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sir, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we combine the two duties of secretary and treasurer into one position.
Second?
Yeah, we did last year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's scary. So we have as secretary, treasurer, Ron Nielsen, Judy Meyer as vice chair, and Ken Howard as chair for the upcoming year. It's only half past six, and we're already to your report, Benaya. We're moving along here, this is pretty good. Benaya Chevers?
Well, good evening, Chairman Howard, the board, Mr. Lyons, Dr. Dunlap, my constituents, and esteemed guests. So last time, I shared a little bit of a glimpse into my aspirations and coming back to NIC one day to teach, so I'd love to begin today's report with a quick story. My grandmother worked here at NIC from 1980 to 2000, so for 20 years here in dining services. My grandmother has always been a big role model to me, and she taught me to work hard, to have fun, and to just be myself. Last month, I told you that as a North Idaho native, it's been a wonderful experience growing up here in Coeur d'Alene, and I remember coming downtown to swim at the beach or to hike Tubbs Hill. I can remember coming here to watch basketball games or wrestling matches. I even remember when NIC still had the men's baseball team in the baseball field. And now the college has changed and grown, and it's continuing to do so. And I have changed and grown as a young man, and I hope to make a positive impact here at the NIC community, especially in service to the student body. After all, my grandmother, Mary, taught me to work hard, to have fun, and to just be myself, and I guess to be a part of the NIC community as well. So I will be, just like she was and still is, a member of the NIC family for a long, long time. So to date, two of North Idaho College's core values are student success and educational excellence, and ASNC has a project that we have undertaken this year to better the transferability of the college's degrees and programs. So let me tell you a little bit about the project. Our ASNC Senator, Bob Mertens, has been working on this project since the beginning of the school year, and he's done some research using a veterinary medicine program that we have here, the pre-vet program, as a template for looking at how that transfers to universities. Recently, Senator Mertens met with Vice President of Student Services, Grayden Stanley, the Dean of General Studies, Larry Briggs, and Sally Henders, our Director of Academic Support Services. This meeting was to discuss how we as students can collaborate with administration to work toward the common goal of bettering the transferability of these, of our degrees and programs that we offer. So we're going to continue working toward making sure that we're up to date as a community college to transfer to universities, so I just wanted to share that collaboration, how we're going to be working together, and the students are very passionate about meeting the needs of students there. We're also forming our ASNC Budget Committee Review, or Review Committee, for our budget to begin meeting in December, so we're going to get a head start on our ASNC budget for the fiscal year 2015. We're inviting members of our organization. We fund outdoor pursuits, they're a big part of our budget, and we're happy to support them, so we're going to do the work there internally to get our budget ready for this next year. Another committee that we're looking towards here in the near future is forming our Elections Committee, and this year, our goal is to increase student participation in student government elections, both in the voter turnout and in the number of candidates that run for office. So we'll be actively recruiting students to be involved in student leadership. And a couple more things is, I'll be traveling down to the College of Western Idaho on December 19th and 20th with Grayden Stanley, our Vice President of Student Services, and we're going down there for the Idaho State Board of Education meeting. I'll also have a chance to meet with some of the other student body... I'll also have a chance to meet with some of the other student body presidents, or maybe some of their senators from the other colleges in the state of Idaho, and collaborate and share ideas. So, I'm looking forward to that. And then, right now, as we speak, we have Senators Jordan Dohler, Andy Hughes, Josh Swan, along with our Advisor Heather Erickson. They are currently in New Orleans for a stu-, National Student Leadership Conference. And that's an organization that puts on student leadership conferences for student government and other student leadership positions. So, hopefully, right now, they're learning and networking and coming up with ideas to bring back to the table here at NIC. So, that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Benaya, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Next is a report from Staff Assembly, Nancy Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman Howard, Board of Trustees, and President Dunlap. Good evening. It seems like we were just here not too long ago. But anyway, I'll report on what we have been doing this past couple of weeks since I last spoke. This month, we had Teresa Henderson from Human Resources come to the Staff Assembly meeting to educate us on the tuition waiver program. There were also reports and updates on the United Way Campaign, the Professional Development Program, and reports from College Senate. There are two projects that Staff Assembly is currently working on this month. The first is the St. Asnc program. St. Asnc is a gift-giving program for children of NIC students, staff, and faculty who may need a little help during the holiday season. For the past few years, Staff Assembly has been involved with St. Asnc by collecting food and money to prepare food baskets. We will continue collecting this, these items through the first week of December. Then Jan Peterson of our Food Services area will prepare the food baskets for everyone who needs a holiday dinner. When we first started a few years ago, we had maybe 20 food baskets that we prepared. Last year, Jan prepared 70-plus. The other project Staff Assembly is working on is with student Tori Schuler, who is raising awareness for the needs of the North Idaho Violence Prevention Center. We have joined with Tori, and during the month of November, we will be collecting new pajamas and undergarments for women and children who come to the center. That concludes my report, and thank you.
Any questions?
Quick one.
Yes, Kristi.
Normally, you have the Christmas tree and we just pull a little ornament around.
It's down there.
Okay, we can go, thank you.
Yeah. Be careful, I think the Christmas tree's got little pricklies.
Oh, I'll be all right.
So, but it's down there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next report is from the Faculty Assembly, Michelle Lippert.
Good evening, Chairman Howard, Trustees, President Dunlap. It's Week 13, the week where students begin to recognize that the end of the semester means projects to complete, papers to write, and exams to take. Their anxiety is beginning to increase, resulting in questions about grades, requests for extra credit, and the need for massages. The faculty, too, is looking into the grading abyss and the dawning recognition, recognition that final grades are due a day earlier than usual so that the staff will not have to work on Christmas Eve. Our last Faculty Assembly meeting focused largely on providing input to the Senate about policies currently under review. Beyond that, there were additional issues brought forth by the Assembly. A question arose as to the status of the longhouse. As some of you may know, the college entered into an agreement with the tribe some years ago to build a longhouse on campus. I knew nothing about the status of the proposed longhouse and looked into the matter. I discussed the issue with two members of the Nine Point Committee as well as President Dunlap. I understand that while the longhouse was a priority a few years ago, complications concerning location, whether it would be a multiple use or a single use, and the declining economy placed that on hiatus. As the economy improves and you look to future buildings, perhaps it's time to dust that off. The faculty also requested more information about the proposed event center. I have asked President Dunlap for that information and will present it to the faculty at our next meeting. While we have been assured that monies for the facility will not come from the general funds, the report last month about the projected operating losses of the facility raises some This is an aside, this wasn't part of my report, but since Pat is still here, and you talked about expanding all your other programs, the Post-Fall School District would like to invite you to extend your reading program to Post-Fall.
How can I say no?
Thank you.
Pressure.
I will stand for questions.
Any questions? Michelle, thank you very much. And now, the Senate report from Chantel Black.
Good evening, Chairman Howard, the Board, and President Dunlap. Senate actually has not met yet this month, so my report's going to be pretty short and sweet, as I can only share with you our agenda for the month. We will be doing the second reading of all of the policies and procedures that Audrey shared with you last time that passed for first reading. There's seven of those total. And then, we will have three first readings on the agenda. The one I really want to point out to you is that we will have the first reading of the committee policy and procedure, and we're really excited to see that in front of Senate this month because that means that we can move forward with the committee restructuring that started last year by President's Cabinet. And so, once that passes, we can move forward and start hearing all of those committees that have been coming to Senate and that we know will be coming in the spring and be able to complete that project on time. So, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Trustees, and colleagues, my report will be fairly brief tonight, but first, I have some updates from VPs that I've asked them to report out on. The first is, I'm going to ask Grayden Stanley to talk a little bit about the implications of the Coeur d'Alene Summer Theater, which fell on some financial hard times and has relocated their operation to the Crock Center, which is a much smaller venue than Schuler Auditorium. And that will create opportunity for us during the summer, and so I've asked Grayden to take a look at what we've learned from that and what the implications are for the college. So, Grayden?
Sure, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, President Dunlap, another guest. I'd first like to, to recognize Justin Van Eaton, who's not here tonight, but who has been my partner. As you know, he's been responsible for operations in Schuler for a number of years, and Justin was just critical to this process we went through with the history that he has with Coeur d'Alene Summer Theater and operations there. Like to also recognize the good work, Mark Lyons and Megan and myself have spent some time together on this particular issue to make sure we had all the paperwork in order. So, I appreciate the work that, that Mark and his firm has done recently. We've just recently nearly put all the, all the icing on that, and, you know, it's, it's been, for as difficult as the circumstances were for Coeur d'Alene Summer Theater, it's been a, a good process, a partnership that we've had for a number of years, and as they encountered difficult times, we tried to be compassionate in working through that with them, but throughout that time, not giving anything away on behalf of our stakeholders and our taxpayers here. So, in fact, the agreement that we have with them puts us in a position to collect all the funds that were due to us. We didn't give anything away on, on behalf of our stakeholders, yet we've provided terms for them to be able to, to meet that. Their Board, Joe Anderson, their Chair, and others have been real cooperative and real earnest in, in working through that process, and our paperwork is, is nearly signed and ready to deliver. Important things that we learned from that process that was that multi-year contracts, and if this is transferable to some of our endeavors in the future, I think it's important to note. Multi-year contracts are, are difficult for us. The circumstances change, the economy changes, the players often change. And so, when you're bound to contracts that were negotiated by different people that were at the table, and you're trying to carry those forward, and, and oftentimes, in this case, and with goodwill, some of that was negotiated on handshakes and agreements, and there wasn't always a paper trail for that. And so, trying to go back and say, well, we had traded for this, we decided this, we had agreed upon that, was difficult when players at the table changed. And so, recommendations as we move forward certainly are to, to A, be, make sure if we're going to negotiate multi-year contracts, that, that we have options out all the time. If conditions change, we have an opportunity to get out without any liability. And I guess, secondly, making sure that we're just so thorough, utilize the services of, of Mark and company to make sure we're so thorough in the paperwork that we do that, as, as much as we want to be good partners, we want to make sure our partnership is understood by both sides clearly, by, by filing all the paperwork that's necessary. So, those are probably the, the two biggest takeaways. This'll, there's a, hopefully, a happy beginning for Coeur d'Alene Summer Theater, as President Dunlap mentioned, and yet, the college has protected its investment as well. Lastly, I would just note, one of our concerns was, of course, losing the revenue and the contracting at the theater for the summer. We have four or five contacts since, since they understood that that has opened up for this next summer. They're currently working with Justin to try to fill some of that time. I don't think we'll be able to fill the, the whole three and a half months that Coeur d'Alene Summer Theater was there. But I should also, I should also tell you that our Fine Arts Department is very excited about the educational opportunities that that offers to them. Through our music and our drama programs, they're very excited about being able to offer some summer camps and clinics on our campus that they've been unable to do. I have a meeting with Max Mendez coming soon, Terry, and others who are anxiously looking to do some programming in the summer since they have access back to the theater there.
Any questions? Judy?
Clarification. Grayden, we had a contract with the Summer Theater folks, and how did that contract work out? Did I hear, instead you say they would be complete paying on the contract?
Absolutely. They've met all their financial obligations to us. They were in a difficult situation, but we, we've arranged a contract now where, through a payment plan and a relatively brief one, they're going to, to meet all the liabilities that they had to us that way. The only, the only thing that we did, they were under a five-year contract which had one year left, they asked if they could be released from the fifth year of their contract, and that was certainly fine with us.
I think it's to the credit of the theater, they were under difficult circumstances, and we appreciate their honorability in completing the contract.
Any other questions or comments? Grayden, before we move that, from that topic, my understanding there was some equipment that was being purchased in conjunction with the Summer Theater. What was the resolution with regard to that equipment?
You know, in fact, after Justin had a chance to look at all that was there and the, the life that it had left in it, there were only a couple of things that, that he could utilize. And so, most of it was highly technical in nature. There was, I want to say it was called a piggytail, but it was some of the, the connections to the electronics and a couple other items. We traded for that in the negotiations for, for the debt, those were already items we had hooked up in, in our auditorium. And then, the rest of the items that we were negotiating over really didn't have the value to us that, that we needed. They were a little older, and so, we didn't trade for that. They kept those possessions, and instead, they'll be paying for that.
The other question I have is with regard to the, the revenues that were generated by the Summer Theater, and I realize from your comments that some of that may be filled in with academic offerings. Do we have any kind of an understanding of what the, the fiscal impact of not having the Summer Theater there is going to be?
What Justin would want me to tell you is that, you know, we didn't make a lot of money. What we were able to do with, with Summer Theater was keep a number of people employed, a number of the staff for Schuler, our hourly folks, that during the summer typically would not have had employment, but through Coeur d'Alene Summer Theater, that provided revenue to continue to pay them. Any, any time that won't be scheduled this summer, we won't have the expenses associated with it because we just won't staff it. Justin would also tell you that he's very excited, that he thinks with the opportunity to market Schuler for the summer, that he can generate more revenue than we were generating through a, you know, we had a, a deal with Coeur d'Alene Summer Theater that was a partnership that, that benefited both. We liked our association with them, it brought a lot to our community, but we also gave them, it was a pretty good deal. We were good partners. I think with the opportunity to market this to other entities, we'll see that we can generate more revenue in the long term.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Grayden. Next, I'm going to ask Lita Burns to give us a report on the progress for implementation of Common Core. And the Common Core is an educational reform project, and it has implications for curriculum on our campus as well. Dr. Burns?
Chairman Howard, members of the Board, we are working, first of all, I, I'd like to begin by talking about general education reform at the higher education level, if that's okay.
Yep.
Because for the past year, the institutions of higher education have really been working on revising the general education requirements in higher education. And the main impetus for that reform is to ensure more direct articulation between the community colleges and the four-year institutions, and not only between community colleges and four institutions, but between community colleges, between the four-year institutions as well. When we began to work on this, we discovered that, you know, it was a, a common knowledge that our graduates from community colleges went on to four-year institutions, but what, what wasn't as common knowledge is how frequently in the state of Idaho, students transfer from University of Idaho to ISU and then finish up at BSU. Students transfer from, now are transferring from the College of Southern Idaho to the College of Western Idaho and finishing at BSU, starting at the College of Southern Idaho, finishing at U of I. So, there's a lot of transfer going on. And although we have had an articulation agreement in the state for a number of years, which ensures that if somebody leaves a community college with an Associate of Science or an Associate of Art degree, they will be recognized as junior status as they enter one of the four-year institutions. And that has worked fairly well. The challenge has been is that many students leave actually before acquiring that Associate of Science or the Associate Arts degree. And then, when they go on to another institution, they sometimes are required to take additional courses, they don't really have that core complete, or it's not recognized as being core complete. So, this initiative to the general education reform in the state of Idaho really is to identify what it means to be, have your general education core requirements complete. And in the future, when this work is done by a task force in the state, which all parties, all the institutions of higher education are participating in, we will definitely be stamping our transcripts as having been core complete. And then, any institution in the state will then be required to receive that student as having met all the general education core requirements. Now, how this kind of matches up with the Common Core is, is that in many ways, our secondary institutions are, are trying to do the same thing, trying to identify what all students who are leaving secondary education should have, what knowledge, what abilities, what skills they should have as they leave and enter into post-secondary education. And so, they're working very hard to establish those, not only in Idaho but across, across the nation. And then, also, they are working with the smarter balance to be able to identify how those, that core knowledge is going to be assessed, which is even more important. So, institutions of higher education now are working hard to begin to learn more about that so that we can align up a little bit more closely as they leave their core education at the secondary level, how that aligns with post-secondary education as, as we receive those. We have actually faculty who are attending national conferences to learn more about those, that Common Core requirement, and how the assessments, even more importantly, how the assessments are being done, and how it is that we might receive those assessments. This, as you well know, would also impact our look at remediation in higher education and when, how, how the core requirements and the assessment of those core requirements are going to impact how we have been addressing remediation at, at the post-secondary level. Questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
And lastly, I've asked Mark Browning to report out on the Dyke Project. That's an ongoing issue with regard to recertification of the Dyke.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We are expecting the Geotech Report back through the city from Rune Yeager by Friday. That report will give us a, a better idea of exactly what work has to be done. City indicated to me that they plan to call together their group, along with the incoming city council folks and, and mayor that have been recently elected, along with, with our folks here, and other stakeholders, obviously, from the foreground- and other stakeholders, obviously from the foreground, homeowners association and some of the other associated folks. Probably the second week of December is where they're targeting, so we can go through the report, see exactly what's going to be needed. Some of the preliminary indications, and we really want to stress this, it's preliminary, this is what they believe is in, is the findings, but, you know, nothing will be final until we see the actual report. But some of the early indications are, is that we may not have to take as many trees as what was originally thought. So we'll hope that that is the case indeed on Friday, but we'll get a date probably after the holiday for the second week of December, that the city will put that meeting together. And I would imagine we'll be either here or over at City Hall, and we can let you know on that.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? Yes.
On that topic or just for?
On that topic. I have one question, maybe a request more than a question. I would like to have the members of the Board of Trustees given a copy of that report as soon as you get it. It would be nice to be able to review it before there's any kind of a public hearing or public meeting on it, so that we can be prepared, if need be, to ask for additional, ask additional questions and that sort of thing. So if we could get a copy as quickly as you get it, I appreciate it.
Will do.
Thank you.
And I just have a few announcements. The Physical Therapy Assistant Program has received candidacy status, and that's a collaboration between CWI, CSI, LCSC, and NIC. It's the first time that that accrediting body has had to approve candidacy status for a program that is going to be delivered in multiple locations. And so it was a challenge for them to understand how that would be done. And so I want to commend Lita Burns for her vision, and Kristi Doyle for her implementation of that program, and the level of collaboration that has gone on with the other institutions. There is no other physical therapy assistant program in the country that is structured to be delivered at four different sites. So we will be putting our first class in place in January. And so that's a pretty exciting time for our health sciences and programs. I mentioned to you before about PTEC, which is a collaboration between us, the Forest Bird Charter School, and being funded by the Albertson Foundation. We met last week with IDEO, which is a consulting company out of San Francisco, to begin the planning and design phase of that project. Coincidentally, today it was announced that the federal administration is releasing a $100 million grant project to fund projects exactly like PTEC and KTEC. And so there may be some opportunity for KTEC or PTEC with those grant opportunities. They're going to be funding up to 40 different projects at $2 to $7 million apiece. And so our foundation folks and our grant writer will take a look at that, and there may be some ability to parlay what we're doing with PTEC into something even bigger and better. Tomorrow, Inland Northwest Partners is having their winter meeting. And Inland Northwest Partners has an interest in the economic well-being of Washington and Idaho. And I suspect there'll be standing room only tomorrow because trustee Nielsen will be making a presentation on business and educational partnerships. So I'm sure it'll be an interesting presentation.
There's only six chairs, Joe, don't worry.
What's that?
There's only six chairs.
Well, I have one of them. Let's see. Lastly, what I want to mention is that we have a legislative reception scheduled for December 4th to meet with our legislators and locally elected officials to talk about our priorities for the next legislative session. And that concludes my report.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Kristi.
Couple, Dr. Dunlap, how many students will be in the first physical therapy class? How much room is there?
Lita, you want to answer that?
On the NIC campus, 10. There will be 20 at CWI, there will be 10 at CSI, and six at LCSC.
Wow.
Total, oh, God.
Yeah, that's great. And then, one more question, if I may, Mr. Chair. Do we have a RSVP from all the legislators? I guess, Mark, you could.
Mark?
Mr. President, members of the board, at this point, we have two that have confirmed. We are actively pursuing, cajoling, creatively incentivizing attendance as were legally allowed.
They must have forgot to check the email, but we will get back to them, right?
Yes, we will.
Yeah.
Encouragement from trustees always helps.
Oh, great.
Could you give us the list of names that haven't responded so that we can put it on the air, so that they know that they haven't, we haven't received their reply?
That would be my pleasure.
Okay. Well, let's start right now.
Or who has replied and who hasn't.
He'll have to say two names, and we know the rest. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No, he's exercising discretion. I have two questions. Of the original amount of money that we had budgeted for the feasibility study regarding the Dyke, and we were paying half of that up to a cap, how much of that money has been dispersed at this point?
All of it. $248,000, some odd dollars and some odd cents.
Okay.
Made in two separate payments. I think one in July or August and one, I believe, October, but they've been paid.
And I take it, Mark, at this point, you don't have any idea on what sort of level we're looking at for funding, just we're hoping it's less trees, and we'll see. One more question, sir, if I may, Chair. President Dunlap, one of the things that I believe Andy has been researching was the feasibility of us going online, live, on the air. And I was wondering where that initiative is at this point, and he may even have some information or numbers, I don't know if you can share with us tonight, or where we're at with that.
Andy just mentioned that to me at the beginning of this meeting, and it requires some hardware that costs approximately $5,000. And so that's something we're going to have to weigh against our budget reduction strategy and determine if that's something that we want to do.
Could we, Mr. Chair, could we possibly have a short report maybe on that in the December meeting?
Sure.
I propose that as a potential agenda item.
Any other comments? Why don't you, you're next on the list here for the new business, but we have no old business on the agenda tonight. There had been an earlier agenda item for professional technical short-term results of a study that the administration was doing, and it's my understanding that that would be presented next month.
That's correct. The Jacklin Seed Company has been asked to look at a short-term fix and is working a proposal for us, and that'll be presented at the December meeting.
That would be the only comment on old business. On the new business, we have the naming of the wrestling mat room.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question on that last topic? Just for clarification, President Dunlap, what programs are we looking at specifically for that short-term interim solution?
We're looking at the welding program and the ORPV program.
Thank you.
So moving on to the wrestling mat room naming, President Dunlap.
There has been a request to name the wrestling practice room after a former wrestling coach. And Pat, you want to come up and talk about that very briefly?
Yeah.
Okay.
In Al's absence here, I'll tell you what I know on it. John Owen, obviously, a longtime coach here, had won eight national titles during his stint here, Hall of Fame coach at the NJCAA. Very fortunate to have John here for 19 years. And the request is to name the practice mat room that we practice in, the John Owen Wrestling Room.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to suggest that the request meets our policy and procedure on naming of facilities, and I don't see any reason to carry this over into a second reading. So I'd like to make a motion, we move forward tonight, and grant them the ability to name the wrestling mat room after John Owen, who richly deserves it. That's a motion.
And waive the second reading?
Yes, please. I think they meet policy and procedure, it's not necessary to drag it out.
Any second?
Actually, I had a question.
Second, Meyer.
Okay, go ahead.
Question, Coach, would you explain what that entails, the naming, what you're going to do to recognize that?
Basically, with Randy Boswell bringing it forward, along with Ali Williams, and the naming would take place at the tri-state tournament. We have 520-some participants there. I know, looking at the gym, you're like, where do you put them all? But they will be there before the finals, along with 1,000 fans that we can bring John's family down with him in the middle of the mat, and unveil a nameplate, a sign that's going to go right above the wrestling room door as you enter that. It's funny talking to Randy Boswell, just who has wrestlers in his class, that it's been a while, and as you look at that, we want those wrestlers, as they walk into that room, to look at John's name. I know he meant, obviously, a ton to me, I wrestle for John and everything, but it's for future wrestlers and just everyone in the gym to take a look at the court that's named, take a look at the wrestling room that's named, and like you said, over 19 years, what John brought to the sport. But that's kind of how it would be unveiled.
Thank you. I just wanted you to share that, I thought that was worthwhile to hear.
We've got a motion and a second to name the wrestling mat room, the John R. Owen room, mat room?
Wrestling room, yep.
Wrestling room. And that we waive the second reading as part of the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The next item under new business is a financial audit for the year ending June 30, 2013, Ron Dorn.
For our chair, board members, I'm happy to report that you'll get an audit report for non-qualified audit that's very good, and it actually shows a surplus for the end of the year. One of my last official acts, I can say something positive about financing, but it is not me, it really is, you know, I get to do this just because I got a title. But this work really belongs to Sarah, Sandra, and the others, members of their staff, that do all the legwork and do all the hard work all year, and do the checks and balances, and try to keep people on straight and narrow to make this happen. So I'm proud to have, presented by you.
Thank you. Thank you. Pull up my presentation here. Okay, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, and trustees for having me here this evening. I too have a brief presentation, although I have been told that Mr. Nielsen has a lot of questions for me, so it may go longer than I anticipated. First of all, I'd like to thank, as Ron said, the staff and the management, and I see we come in for probably about a five-week process altogether, and ask for a lot of documentation, a lot of reconciliations and schedules that are above and beyond the normal duties. And I know that when we leave, they're all happy to see us go, so they can get on with their day-to-day business. So appreciate that. All of you should have received a 75-page document that is your financial report. In that document, there is a management discussion and analysis that is on page 6 through 13 that your controller, Sarah Garcia, puts together each year. And if you read nothing else, that's a great narrative of what's happened at the college over this last year. The year that we were auditing was the fiscal year end, June 30th, 2013. Pages 6 through 13. Uh-huh. Yes. So I'm not going to go through all of these pages, but that is a great narrative of what...
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Tony, for my own benefit, since I was with you during the preliminary briefing as the one trustee, for my edification, is there anything significant that I should note that's different from what we went through on that Tuesday meeting?
No.
Okay.
There is not.
I was just curious, just if there's anything I should have a heads-up on or be aware from the discussions that we had.
No, there were no changes to the report and/or the recommendations that we made.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, anyway, I just wanted to point you to that, to make sure that you do read that. I'm going to go over the purpose of an audit, describe the process a little bit to you, and then present the results of your audit, and a few financial highlights. And then I've put together some graphs on your fund balance that we talk about every year. That is obviously very important to creditors, to taxpayers, to the board, to see where you're at and see where you should be as far as your fund balance. And I'll talk about what the fund balance is, represents, and what recommended benchmarks are for that. Okay. So first of all, purpose of a financial statement audit. Well, the reason that, the primary reason that you have a financial statement audit is because the state of Idaho requires you to have an audit. State statutes require governments with a threshold of a certain budget to have an annual audit. You also are required by the federal government to have what's called a single audit, or an A133 audit. Any entity that expends more than $500,000, which you've spent about $40 million last year, is required to have an audit over their federal programs. So we performed a single audit as well. Also, since you do have bonded debt, part of your debt covenants require that you have an annual audit, financial statement audit. And so the reason that they require you to have a financial statement audit is so that they can be assured that the financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and particularly governmental gap. They're also wanting to make sure that they have reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. Now, this talks about reasonable assurance and material misstatement because part of the audit process involves pulling samples, performing analytics. We would not be able to look at every single transaction that you perform during the year. If you think of how many staff you have to perform all those functions, an audit of every transaction would be prohibited. So we follow guidelines by governmental auditing standards and by American, or, excuse me, AICPA standards, and perform tests to make sure that the assets that are on your balance sheet, or your statement of net position, as it's called for your entity, are correct, so that you can feel comfort that the cash that Sarah says you have in the bank is there. So we perform third-party verifications of those amounts, the liabilities, your payroll accruals, salary accruals, things like that, so that you can be assured that the liabilities that Sarah's telling you you have at June 30th are materially correct, and that the result, your net position, is materially correct. When we're testing your revenues and expenditure cycles, we're pulling samples and performing analytics, and if anything comes to our attention, we bring it to their attention. So the results. We issued three separate reports as a result of our audit procedures. The first report, you can find on page 3 through 5, and this is the independent auditor's report over the financial statements. And in this report, we have issued, as Ron said, an unqualified, or what we call a clean opinion.
That always worries me, Tony, you say we're unqualified.
I know, it doesn't sound, so I make sure I'm put clean. The other types of reports that could be issued would be what's called a qualified report, which means that we were able to test all of the items except for maybe a certain element, like maybe your investments, we weren't able to test those. So we would say, everything else is reasonably stated except for your investments. Then there's adverse opinion, where we would say, everything is just not correctly stated, we can't, you know, you can't rely on this. Or a disclaimer of opinion, where we say, you don't have the accounting records to even perform an audit and issue an opinion. So I would not anticipate you ever having any of those opinions. You have very competent staff, you have good systems in place, you have experienced staff. Will you ever have items that come to our attention that we report to you, that we make recommendations on? Yes. Will you ever have findings? Yes, you have had findings in the past. Yes, you have had findings in the past. Talk about, talking about findings, if you were to have significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that we uncover during the course of our audit, we would report those in the internal control over financial reporting report, which you can find on page 66 and 67. This year, we did not have significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that were brought to our attention as a result of the items that we did test. We did, however, come upon a few matters that we thought were important enough to make recommendations, and you all should have received a letter of recommendations as well. And those did not rise to the level of a significant deficiency or a material weakness. So this report that we issued was also an unqualified or clean opinion. Any questions so far? Okay. The final report that we issued is over your major federal programs. Now, I told you, you have about $40 million, you spent about $40 million of federal monies last year. Well, the federal government requires us to perform an analysis and risk assessment over which programs are major programs, and test specific, 14 specific compliance requirements that they've issued over those programs that they want us to look at. So we're not looking at every single compliance requirement related to every program, but specifically 14 elements they've asked the independent financial auditor to look at. So, this year, we looked at your Head Start program, and also your financial aid program. Now, your financial aid program is required to be tested every year as part of that process, so. And that report that we issued on your major programs was also an unqualified clean opinion. And, sorry, that report is on page 68 to 69. Now I'm pulling out just a few financial highlights over this last year. Your operating revenues remained fairly stable this last year, and your operating revenues consist of your tuition, your fees, and any operating grants that you receive from the state or federal government. So those barely changed at all from the previous year. In contrast, your operating expenses increased by approximately 1.9 million, and these were mainly due to personnel increases, financial aid, and also depreciation over your capital assets. You guys have had some, actually, capital contributions, some significant capital contributions over the last few years, and those go on to your books and start becoming depreciated, so that amount increased this last year, too. Talking about capital contributions, you also had this year $4.13 million in capital contributions. Now, those are items that were contributed to you from the Idaho Public Works projects, capital projects that they paid for and gave to you. That was about $1.27 million. And then LCDC contributed 2.86 for Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the North Campus. So, those are added to your books as a capital asset and then depreciated over their useful So your overall increase in net position, which your net position is your assets less your liabilities, so your overall increase for the year was 5.44 million, and without those contributed capital items, it would have been 1.31 million. And so, and that's, when we're talking about your increase in net position, that is what's on the full accrual basis of accounting, so that's taking all of your assets, which include your cash, your receivables, your capital assets less depreciation, all of your liabilities, which are your current liabilities, your payables, your salaries accruals, and your debt. So the assets less the liabilities equal your net position. Now, you operate day-to-day and annually and budget on more of a current resource basis, and so you're used to talking about fund balance. If you wanted to look at your change in fund balance for the year, it was $195,000 increase. So, quite a big difference between the two increases, and it's mainly because you're recognizing your capital assets and your long-term liabilities, and on your current resources, you're just looking at, what cash do we have, what receivables do we have, and what payables and liabilities do we have to pay within the current year? And those assets less those liabilities are your fund balance. Any questions on that? Nope, okay. Another financial highlight, your state appropriations increased about $1 million this last year from compared to 2012, and your private gifts, grants, and contracts also increased by about $370,000. Okay, now I'm going to start talking about fund balance. Why is a fund balance important? Your revenue stream is not consistent from month to month. Property taxes, you receive a big chunk in January, a big chunk in July. Your state appropriations do not come in on a consistent month-to-month basis. However, your staff want to be paid on a month-to-month basis, as do your contractors or vendors. Having a fund balance can protect you from unnecessary borrowing. If you have equipment that you need to replace, or other items that you need to replace, you can use your fund balance versus having to go out and borrow. Provides a prudent resource to meet unexpected emergencies or recessions, and protect against catastrophic events, if we have a heavy snowfall, fuel prices raise, things like that. If you have a fund balance, you can make sure and cover those. Meets uncertainties of state and federal funding, there again, if you have shortfalls in any of your funding, if you have fund balance, you can cover costs. And if you do need to go out and get a bond to finance any of your buildings or projects or whatever, having a healthy fund balance actually gives you a better credit rating, which gives you a lower interest rate. And it helps ensure your future financial stability. Okay, so the question that we get quite often is, we know what a fund balance is, now, where should we be? The Government Finance Officers Association issues a couple of different benchmarks, and these are, they only issue minimums, minimums that they recommend. They don't issue a maximum because every entity is different, whether you're a community college, a school district, a city, a fire district, a highway district, you have different needs. The state of your facilities, et cetera, are in different shape, so there's not a amount that they issue for a maximum, but they do issue these minimums. And one of them is that your general fund, fund balance be no less than 5% to 15% of your regular operating revenues, or no less than one to two months of regular general fund operating expenses. So in the next three slides, I'm going to show you where you are in relation to your fund balance and those benchmarks. This slide shows you, since 2005, where you've been as, in total, for your unrestricted, undesignated fund balance. You can see you're at a low in 2006 of 2.4, high in 2011 of 12.3. In the last two years, you've been right around 11.4, 11.6 million in your unrestricted, undesignated fund balance, and that's your general fund only. So if you look, if you take that, those balances, and apply the benchmarks, as far as days expenditures and general fund, unrestricted, undesignated fund balance, you've been as low as 27 days in 2006, as high as 109 in 2011. In the last two years, you were at 93. Again, the recommended minimum is two months. And then if you look at your fund balance as a percentage of your annual revenue, again, 2006 was 7%, 2011 you're at 27, and then 12 and 13 you are at 25%. The recommended minimum is 5% to 15% for the GFOA, so. Anyway, those, that is all that I have to comment on this evening, but I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Are there any questions?
Oh, I got, last year was my first year doing this, and I got this report, and I thought I should read it from cover to cover, and then I had 65 questions, so I took Tony, and we spent two and a half hours going through them. When I was all done, I figured out that this is a different kind of financial statement than I'm used to seeing. I learned real quickly, as you go to page 73, 74, and you look for an auditor's perspective of the results that summarize that they didn't see anything of any significance, and we didn't raise our taxes to our taxpayer, so I say, from all I can tell, Tony, you did another great job.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Todd?
Actually, a couple, three. No particular order. Last year, one of the items that you suggested that we improve was the handling of cash, and we put a remediation program in place. What was your assessment of that? Have we corrected it adequately, sufficiently? Did you see an improvement there?
Yes, absolutely. We tested that, and there were significant improvements made in that area.
Okay. We have a couple of significant 501(c)(3) nonprofits that support the college, both the Foundation and the Booster Club.
Yes.
In the past, when you guys have done the audit, you've referenced both those entities, although I understand that the audit for the Foundation is actually done by an outside agency, and you're given a certain amount of data that you incorporate or import into your document, but that you actually don't verify that information.
We do not perform the audit over the Foundation, no.
This year, you have chosen to omit the Booster Club. And one of the things that's interesting in the audit is you refer to the UPMIFA that the state of Idaho has adopted, and so you've mentioned it in the report, and it talks about how you account for the 501(c)(3). Now, since we've omitted the one, my questions are, who made that decision? By what authority did we make that decision? And I guess, one of the questions I had during the review was, what was the dollar threshold that caused you to make that decision? So, can you give me a little bit on that?
I can answer most of those questions. Specifically, the dollar threshold, I cannot answer, although that is the primary reason that the Booster Club was not mandated to have, or you were not mandated to have the Booster Club as a component unit. Your president made the choice to not include that this year, I believe, that's my understanding. And it, GASP 61 is the standard, and it actually changed over this last year, and I actually brought documentation for you this evening to provide to you, so you could read through that and understand why we made that, or you made that decision. I don't make the decision, that's a management decision.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I do, I have a couple more.
Oh, well, I'd like, I'd like Todd to finish up.
Go ahead and finish up, then.
One of the other items that caught my attention is the Cootney County resident verification for tuition and fees. One of the things that you'd expressed was a concern that we have no way of verifying when someone on their application says, yeah, hey, I live in Cootney County somewhere. And I know that we've got folks that have been interacting at the state level, talking about the state liquor tax and the reimbursement of the $500 from the out-of-county tuition, and I was wondering, have we put something in place, or have you given us some sort of marching order on that? How to dovetail those two efforts, or how we're going to incorporate a verification process?
Our recommendation was for you to look at a process to incorporate, but we did not and do not go beyond that recommendation.
Mark, is that in your bailiwick?
No, it's Ron's.
Ron's? Okay, I didn't know if you did that on the legislative level, as they've been discussing this amongst the various counties and state entities, trying to figure this one out. Okay. Okay, I'd like more on that later, so I'll just throw that out there now.
Well, there was a college, there was a response to that question there. You want something besides the response that's in the documentation?
Well, I would like something from the college as to how we're following up on that action item. So I would like a...
But the recommendation is, North Idaho College will take the recommendations from the state into consideration and make adjustments as deemed necessary, because the state is now investigating that statewide. Did you want something more than that, I guess is my question?
Status of that effort, as appropriate.
Okay.
Maybe I'm not being clear, I'd like to know where that, where that exercise is at, and what progress is being made, and who from our college is engaged on that, or who's tracking it.
Being in its infant stages, much like the cash one was last year, you take the recommendation, you work on it over the course of this coming fiscal year, and implement whatever changes we need to make sure we account for that, and that'll be an effort that we work together with the ratings area and financial aid to do. That's what we'll do.
You also mentioned a concern with the new vendor setup. That really concerns me. I'm surprised, have we not had a policy or procedure in place for that previously? And if so, why is it still not in place? Anybody?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Todd, what was the concern?
Well, it's on your sheet here, and you would have got it, I saw it in the review. It was the one that was emailed to you, and then you got the hard copies today.
Oh, I see.
So I had the privilege of seeing all this, and I've had a chance to ruminate on it and see some of the other data, so I was a little bit ahead of everybody on some of these, so. But there was an issue of how a vendor is vetted to be able to be a vendor for NIC, and there's a process and a procedure for that. And basically, if I'm reading this right, is that there was not currently a procedure in place to verify the validity of new vendors here at the college, and I'm surprised about that, that we weren't vetting the vendors, and that there was no policy or procedure in place. So my question is kind of twofold. Who takes on that action item to develop, I mean, I guess how we do the policy, I guess, but the procedure? Who gives us feedback to try to develop that policy? And have we had one in place previously? And if so, why is it still not in place?
Mr. Chair, would that be a board policy?
Probably an administration policy, but probably a question best put to the administration with regard to how they're resolving it, or how they're addressing it.
Yeah, Ron can address that.
We collect W9s from all the vendors as one of the safeguards to them, but we do not do any more than that, so what we're going to institute right now is, in addition to collecting W9s that would verify, there are a lot of their information as vendors, we're going to go to the state website and see what's out there, and use those two status sources to...
Secretary of State website to see if they have an Idaho business license, if they're filing.
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that's another one, like the one before, that they'll be implemented through the course of this year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I guess I have one more. Tony, when you do this audit, do you have any interest, as you're looking at this, as we are thinking of going forward, to raise funds, bonding, any of that sort of thing? Is that under your purview, as you look at any of that stuff?
It is not. Our purview is to make sure, or to test the amounts that are in your financial statement and report to you whether or not they're materially correct. We don't make, we don't step into the role of management, and we can't. We cannot do consulting and management and stay independent, so that definitely would not be under our purview.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Well, Tony, it was, it's obviously a very thorough audit. You've done a nice job for us again this year, and I think you were very, very kind to point out how hard our staff has worked to make sure that we're tracking some of the small concerns that came up last year, even though last year was a good audit, too. But to hear that we have an unqualified, clean audit, that's the best thing a board can hear. And so I would like to extend great appreciation to our staff and to Ron and your staff, working so hard to protect North Idaho College, and protect our taxpayers, and protect our community with such a nice audit, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Tony, thank you very much for your report, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Lost my, so the last, it's 7:30. Wow. So I've got an hour and a half to give my report. And since I was out of the country for most of the last month, I have no report. So we'll move on to remarks for the good of the order. I think we've just made a...
I think that it would probably be a good idea to maybe have Joe do a quick recap on the ribbon cutting that took place this month, that was, I think was a great success, and the governor was here, so I think Joe would be appropriate for you to do that.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Nielsen. Earlier this month, we had the ribbon cutting ceremony for our Aerospace Center of Excellence. That is a program that is funded by the Department of Labor, and there are four different curriculum that will be put in place. The first is a composite curriculum that deals with carbon fiber, and Kevlar, and fiberglass, and how do you make things out of composites. We'll also be putting in place a non-destructive testing program, an aviation mechanics program, and an advanced manufacturing program. And the ribbon cutting was attended by many, many individuals, including the governor, the lieutenant governor, the secretary of commerce, as well as the mayor from Hayden, and I would guess there were probably 150 people maybe in attendance. I mean, it was very, very well attended. It was a high watermark for us. The program, the composite program, has 40 students enrolled in it. One of the companies that is a partner is called Unitec, and they're out at the Hayden Airport, they produce composite products, and they have... They produce composite products, and they have, I believe, six of their current employees attending that course as well. And so that was a monumental effort to get that facility retrofitted, the programs up and running, the faculty hired, the curriculum put in place. And Cassie Silva, who's the director of our aerospace programs, did a fabulous job on that, and I want to thank everybody for attending that ribbon cutting. I thought it was a very special event and represented some very strong partnerships between the aerospace industry and the college, and also our state. And so, very nice event.
Todd?
A couple, three positive things, if I may. One is I'd like to personally thank Ron for his time and effort here at the college. As some of you know, there's going to be a little retirement celebration for him on the 5th of December. It's a Thursday from 1:00 to 2:30, and it's a formal time to say goodbye, and I'm sure many will personally pass their regards to him as their opportunities present themselves. I think I still owe him a beer myself. Following that, on the next day is the holiday party, I'm going to call it the Christmas party, same time, actually, same location pretty much, on the 6th. So I'd like to encourage everybody to show up for that on Friday. My wife and I attended that last year, and it was a wonderful celebration. And then the last thing I'd like to point out to folks, and this is a, I've made it to a number of the pinings, and they're just a blessing to be at. On the 19th of December, on that Thursday, is the registered nurses' pinning, and it's a tremendous celebration. And I see Lita smiling, because that's one of her babies, and of course, Kristy's smiling, too, be proud of their, of their people. And anyway, if you can come to that, you'll be glad that you did. And again, that's on the 19th. So just a few shout-outs to some positive things we have coming up.
Thank you. Judy, did you have a comment?
Just reminded me to mention also, the Basic Patrol Academy commencement is this Friday, the 22nd. So again, it's the holiday season of Thanksgiving, I'm thankful for all these good things that are happening, and certainly would be, I think, on behalf of all us, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. We have a lot to be thankful for, in spite of all the challenges. We have a lot to be thankful for.
Any other comments?
Kristy, what's the time on that post-graduation, do you know?
It's 1:00, 1:00 P.M. Yep.
If there are no further comments, we are adjourned.
Thank you for short meetings.